It's one of the few sports too that has its national sporting organisations based here, isn't it? The executive director for the New Zealand Associations based here, is that right?
We are a community of volunteers and our people are still around talking about what's coming out of New Zealand. It's coming out now.
Cool. Excellent. Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now, Rami. So I invite Rami Al-Jah who's speaking on petition for a time for action. Rami, welcome.
Oh, turn around there. Kia ora, pranataani, kia Rami Al-Jah, ho. Salaam, greetings and peace to the council and all. My name is Rami Al-Jah. I'm a proud Palestinian New Zealander and a proud of Palmerstonia. I've been a pro-Palestinian activist for two years and currently run the pro-Palestinian Saturday Room at the Square and have been doing so for almost two years. Two years is nothing in the context of this brutal war. Activists have been calling out the state of Israel on his genocide and human rights abuses against the Palestinians way before the 7th of October. Action since the inception of Israel, so that's almost 77 years. But here we are just beginning to try to put a policy framework that prevents and penalises offending parties to the highest levels of human crimes in history. Reading the petition brought a tear to my eye because it clearly explains what activists have been saying for decades, which is that condemning and sanctioning parties involved in crimes against humanity such as genocide is not only a war obligation but a legal one at the highest levels, imposed on states i.e. governing bodies, i.e. this council and international bodies, as according to the United Nations Human Rights Treaties that New Zealand is a subsidiary. While condemnation is an important part to document these atrocities in history, the Palestinians are being exterminated in an alarming break with an extermination plan coming closer and closer to completion. And hence we need to move past the condemnation and quickly into the penalties, i.e. prevention. Hence if this petition is accepted by the council, the step which will show our true intentions is our success in designing and implementing a policy framework where international human rights abuses are penalised and sanctioned when existing in any way or any form in Palmerstonia. I'm a proud Palmerstonian and I attended the Mali Awards Council meeting last year and was very proud of my councillors who voted firmly to keep the Mali Awards, which is a moral issue but also at the crux of an illegal issue. But our governments in Wellington keep forgetting that the Treaty of Wightley is a legal contract. Hence I ask you councillors, I ask Palmerstonia to do the right thing again and vote yesterday to be on the right side of history. Na vi era, tena tato, tena kato, katua. Namii. Thank you. Salaam.
Thank you, Rami. You're finished with a few seconds to speak. Well done. Appreciate it. All right. We'll just get some towels there just to fix that water. While we're doing that, we just need to receive the public comment. So let everybody know that the council receives public comments. I'll have you remove that. Second one, Deputy Mayor. And we will look to vote, please. There's passed sixteen votes for and against. All right. We now come to number six on your paper, which is a petition around the ceasefire in Gaza and on like a trend and within a time for action, if you'd like to come up first. Is there any hand over this as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sorry.
Apologies, ma'am.
And Katrina Vivian, you've got ten minutes. You've seen us lots of stuff, so you might want to take this reading and speak to your petition.
First of all, I would just like to... First of all, I'd just like to say thank you so much, your worship, for having this here and to all of the councillors for listening to us. It's a very important time for us. My name is Katrina Mijakutang, tena kutu katua. I'm here representing the residents of Palmerstonia North. I also stand as a Palestinian representing our diverse Palestinian community, both Muslim and Christian, whose people continue to suffer grave human rights abuses, the loss of loved ones and the ongoing violations of dignity, equality and humanity. I also am here representing my natural line, my mother, my grandmother, my great-grandmother, my great-great-grandmother, who were murdered and who were exiled. I bring a simple request that our council exercises good governance in how it spends rate payers' money and reflects the values of our community. We're asking you to do two things. First of all, to publicly support an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza and an end to Israel's illegal occupation of the Palestinian territories affirmed by the United Nations, the International Court of Justice and the Geneva Conventions. And second, to develop and adopt an ethical procurement and investment policy that avoids contracts or investments with companies complicit in grave breaches of international law, including those profiting from illegal settlements and occupation. This request is not from one group. It is across Palmerstonia North. You will see behind me are just a few representatives of your community to whom you represent. Churches of many denominations stand for peace, the Sikh community committed to salvation, the bala, the welfare of all, Muslim, Christian leaders united in grief and justice, our youths hoping that this future council won't ignore international law and keep them in mind, elders and families who believe our city must stand for fairness and humanity and our unions. This is the diverse voice of Palmerstonia North. Over sixteen organisations have signed this petition and behind them are hundreds and hundreds of others. Right now Gaza is in official famine. Over a million people are starving and children are at risk. The UN warns this is man-made starvation and has been used as a method of war. Hospitals, schools, homes and all being churches, mosques and journalists, aid workers have all been attacked, acts that breach international law and constitute war crimes. And yes, delay, if you are not aware, I'll just let you know that the International Association of Genocide Scholars, yesterday, the world's leading authority on genocide, passed a resolution confirming that Israel's actions in Gaza now meet the legal definition of genocide under the Genocide Convention. The UN Security Council, the International Court of Justice have already found a plausible case of genocide. Israel has been ordered to prevent atrocities and allow aid, or all the orders it has to this day ignored. In the West Bank, illegal settlement expansion is dispossessing families while settlers carry out violence with impunity. The UN Security Council has asked for a ceasefire and a release of the hostages. This is not abstract politics. This is international law, human rights, life and death. New Zealand is bound by international law to ensure that its institutions do not aid or assist Israel's unlawful occupation of Palestinian land. The UN Security Council Resolution 2334 of 2016 declared Israeli settlements a flagrant violation of international law and in 24 July, the International Court of Justice advised that all states must abstain from trade or investment that breaches or entrenches Israel's illegal presence in the occupied Palestinian territories. And in September 24, in the UN General Assembly, our own Foreign Minister Winston Peters made this declaration, to which we as the council are one of its organs. He said, and I quote, "Take steps to ensure nationals, companies and entities under their jurisdiction as well as their authorities do not act in any way that would entail recognition or provide aid or assistance in maintaining the situation created by Israel's illegal presence in the occupied Palestinian territories", end quote. Ethical procurement by councils is therefore not only consistent with the United Nations Security Council 2334, the ICJ advisory opinion, the under resolution, but it's a necessary step to ensure that rate payers' money is not used in ways that breach international law. The Local Government Act 2002, Section 10, sets your purpose to promote the social, economic, environmental and cultural wellbeing of our community. Procurement is a core business function of council. How you spend our rates reflects your duty. You already have procurement policies that support environmental and social goals, including promoting local suppliers, reducing emissions and improving environmental outcomes. Expanding this to include fair trade, sustainable sourcing and human rights protections is no different. It's lawful, values-based risk management protecting our city from legal and reputational damage by avoiding suppliers complicit in abuses. The stance of neutral is not neutrality. To stay silent is to side with the powerful and ignore the victims. That is complicity. This council has shown leadership before, raising the Ukrainian flag, fundraising and standing against aggression. That was right. But if we support one community and ignore another facing famine and what the ICJ calls a plausible genocide, we show inconsistency, selectivity and discrimination. We ask you to treat Palestine with the same dignity you treated Ukraine, nothing more, nothing less. And while gestures like raising a flag or fundraising show respect, Palestine is different. The greatest crime in our modern history is unfolding before our eyes. The ICJ has found a plausible case of genocide, you trigger obligations of all states and their institutions. So this requires more than symbolism. It requires policies to ensure we're not complicit. Ethical procurement is not foreign policy. It is a practical, lawful and precedent-based policy triggered only by authoritative international findings. I won't go through again what the findings are because I've just been through them. Other councils, Christchurch, Nelson, Environmental Canterbury have already taken this step. They recognise the cost of inaction and moral reputational harm. This matters locally to our rate payers, to our Palestinian Muslim, Arab and Jewish communities and to anyone who values fairness. It reduces tension by showing that human rights apply equally to all. So words are not enough. A ceasefire call without ethical procurement is symbolic but empty. Procurement is where your statement meets action. Palmerstonia North has always stood for diversity and inclusion, so we are hoping that you show your chance to live those values. To do nothing is to tell part of your community that their pain does not matter. Our vibrant city is known for its multicultural diversity, civic engagement evident through initiatives like the Malawatu Multicultural Council, your welcoming cities and our longstanding sister-city partnerships. Contradictions are not an option. Diversity and inclusion means not acting differently when it comes to Palestinian and our lives. Under this council, I ask, does Palmerstonia North live up to its values, it proclaims, or are there some communities that will be treated differently in our shared city? Councillors, this is not about foreign policy. This is about your duty. Spend responsibly and ethically, protect our city's reputation, promote community wellbeing and uphold international and domestic obligations. So the question is very simple. Will you uphold our values, equality and human rights that your community expects? Palestine requires more than one place. It represents more than one place. It represents all of us. Because when human rights are violated anywhere, humanity as a whole is diminished. International law is meant to protect us all, yet it's been ignored, disrespected and applied selectively. This is the message from your community. We do not want our rate's money funding businesses that profit from Israel's occupation and genocide, making us complicit in these crimes. Many Palmerstonia North families have suffered unbearable losses, including my own family that was bombed in the St Paul Korfiris Church in Gaza and killed, and another of my family members who was not allowed to leave the Holy Family Church and died of appendicitis before he was shot at. This is a pivotal moment for leadership grounded in fairness, equality and humanity. Palmerstonia North can either uphold its values of respect, diversity and community or you betray them. Please support both motions and I now hand over to our Jewish community representative, Vivian.
So, sorry, thank you Katrina. It was exciting. Well, I don't know. But Vivian, if you want to wrap up.
Don't make me feel disrespected. Thanks, ma'am. Yes. Okay. Kia ora and tena kutu katua. My name is Vivian Porjot. I am a Jew. My parents escaped the Nazi Holocaust and found safety and protection here in Artieoro, New Zealand, where I was born and grew up. I have been working for peace and justice in Palestine for over thirty-five years. The Jewish organisation Alternative Jewish Voices is one of the over sixteen organisations endorsing our petition. In fact, more and more Jews around the world are rising in solidarity with the Palestinians. It is false to claim that anyone standing up for the rights of the Palestinians is anti-Semitic. Israel is a state and Zion is a political movement. Judaism and Jewish identity are based on culture, faith and history, belong to a people. These are totally different things. We as Jews are affronted if propagandists for a foreign state, Israel, claim to represent Jews. We oppose this foreign interference in Artieoro. It offends New Zealand values and threatens our social cohesion. Advocacy for a foreign state committing war crimes and atrocities has nothing to do with any kind of human rights. It actually fuels antisemitism. So do not be fooled. In fact, the accusation that antisemitism in this context has nothing to do with defending Jews. It is a device to suppress the voice and experience and history of Palestinians. We reject the weaponisation of our faith and identity to defend war crimes of a rogue state. We are here to support universal human rights, to stand for Palestinians and to save our own community against antisemitism. So I encourage you all to respond positively to our petition and pass both motions. When we stand on the ground of international law...
So Vivian, of interest to us. Can we, has somebody want to say anything briefly?
Only Vivian, two minutes.
Okay. Right. If you could, please, go ahead.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Alhamdulillah, rahim ala ali. Wa asadii wa asalamu ala saidi al-hambiyaa iwa al-mussalin wa mabuthi rahmatan al-ali. Salaam alaikum rahmatullah. Kia ora to everybody. I am Hazam Marathli. I am the former president of the Federation of Islamic Associations of New Zealand. I am a former president of the Malawatu Muslim Association and I'm the president of the New Zealand Association. And I stand here before all of you to support this petition. And what I felt very strongly about talking to you all of you this morning is that the world's leading association of genocide scholars has declared that Israel is committing genocide in Gaza. A resolution passed by the International Association of Genocide Scholars states that Israel combat meets the legal definition as laid out in the United Nations Convention on Genocide. A cross-three-page resolution, the International Association of Genocide Scholars, presents a litany of actions undertaken by Israel throughout the twenty-two-month-long war that it recognises as constituting genocide, war crimes and crimes against humanity. Over five hundred scholars, eighty-six percent, has voted that Israel is committing a genocide in Gaza. Eighty-six percent. It's crystal clear. In summary, of Israel's policies and actions and declarations notes the widespread attack on both the personnel and the facilities needed for survival, including in the healthcare, aid and education sectors. Among many, many other elements, it notes that fifty thousand killed or injured by Israel as highlighted by the United Nations aid organisation, UNICEF, which impacts the ability of Palestinians in Gaza to survive as a group and regenerate. The ICA, the International Association of Genocide Scholars, notes that the statement by Israel leaders dehumanising Palestinians in Gaza, characterising them as the enemy alongside promises to flatten Gaza and turn it into hell.
So Hazam, like the others, can we please wrap it up? Thank you.
Well, it pretty much speaks for itself. Honorable mayor and honourable councillors, the state of Israel is committing a genocide day after day after day and for almost, for all of this long time. When are we going to take the right side of history and cease dealing with such an apartheid state? Thank you very much. Salaam. Tena kutu, tena kutu, tena kutu katua. Salaam alaikum rahmatullah.
Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you may have, legal or otherwise.
I've just got one. And thank you all for your contribution. Have any councils not supported this?
Not that I know of. Ember Carpool were on the one side and others saying, no, they won't. But then they have, after the environmental council went to them, yes, they have supported it.
So why hasn't Auckland supported it? I understand Auckland Council did something.
I don't know about Auckland Council. I'm not here about Auckland Council. I'm here about Palmerstonia North Council. Any other questions that anyone may have about the government policy, about our rights as Palestinians?
Thank you. Thank you Katrina. Thank you Vivian. Thank you Hazam. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
All right, colleagues. We have a petition in front of us and we have to... Let me know that we received the petition information. I'll have you remove that. Second one, Deputy Mayor. And I'll ask you for... There's passed sixteen votes for and against. Colleagues, there has been some alternative recommendations put up. There's been two put up. We'll put those up. First, I sent you one, but I believe Council of Auckland has sent one as well. So the first one which I'll speak to and then Council of Auckland, I'll get you to speak to the second one, is that the council will support an immediate permanent ceasefire in Gaza with the mayor urgently writing to Prime Minister and the foreign affairs minister advocating for such. And that the Mira Relief Fund will also donate $2,000 to the Red Cross International towards urgent humanitarian efforts in Gaza. So colleagues, and I just want to acknowledge our community here and to Katrina, Vivian and Hazam who very eloquently portray the issues that have been in Gaza and the Middle East. They are right in the sense that we have advocated for other communities and the Mira Relief Fund is not public money, but is money that is philanthropic, that comes from trusts and that is, it will be used appropriately in that way. Where we can get some traction and where we not only have the Mira's Act but also the National President of Global Cities is to get in front of the foreign affairs minister immediately, which I understand we have that traction with, and also the Prime Minister advocate for an immediate permanent ceasefire. And I'd ask you to support this. I think this is the very best that we can be doing in this space. So I'll open it up for any comments on one. We might take one, can we name it now, please? One and then two. Maybe take one separately. Or sorry, two and three. And I'll ask you another comments on number two first, councillor. Darni, do you know two? Or are you going to go to three?
Well, I do want to speak in support of your motion.
Okay. Yep. We can take one separately.
Thank you, Mr. May. Appreciate that flexibility. Because I do very much support the motion that you've put up in support of council supporting the immediate permanent ceasefire in Gaza and very much thank the community for coming in today to speak to that. And I particularly want to say how I appreciate how we've taken that further into that dimension from the Mira Relief Fund, which is at your discretion and I think signals very strongly the support that the community finds in this chamber here today. I have moved that additional recommendation in response to the very specific request from the community to consider procurement and investment policies. And I think since they asked us to consider that, it's appropriate to have a motion on the table for elected members to consider, noting that we might need to develop a transition plan in order to be able to do that, but the community asked us to consider it. I think that was sure.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. May. I'd like to ask you a wish, may you... I just want you to understand, is that a common solution to it is on a way of helping to do the foreign business to already call for a meeting of the ceasefire. I just want to understand what you're hoping to achieve for a right to do.
Well, it can be symbolic at times, but also, do we know that?
May 2024, pressure this on?
Yeah, yeah, yes. But there is also renewed pressure to do something, other than firming up and just making a press release.
So what will you be asking the...
I'll be asking them to take an immediate permanent ceasefire, where they had to the mayor, but also also advocate from global citizens.
All right. Thank you. Councillor.
Thanks, Mr. May. And thank you for this motion. And thank you to all of the members of our community who have come in with the petition. I think it's timely and I think it's a good opportunity for us to be able to stay in our position. I wholeheartedly support the call for a permanent ceasefire for the release of hostages and condemn all acts of violence. And I think I'd be very surprised if there's anyone who didn't agree with me. I do just want to say some additional things, and that is that the delivery of famine as a weapon of war has to be condemned wholeheartedly. And that is particular, is particular, I suppose, that lasts for generations. And I can speak to that as someone with Irish heritage. I think this is a very important issue for local people. We know this happening in an international context, but there are so many people in this community that have been affected by the situation, the horrible situation in Gaza. People who are friends of family who have been killed or injured. But as well as that, why in the community would you find it unbearable to see day after day, women, children being killed, hospitals, schools being bombed, people already living in tents being set on fire? The whole thing is appalling. And I just, I welcome the opportunity to hear my... And I must be optimistic if I use actually. I really do. And I'm quite sure that everyone else here agrees. But I just want to say to our members of our community, that it is very important that we all do what we can. We may feel well here in Pakistan that there's not a whole lot we can do. But actually, all voices put together do make a difference. So encourage my colleagues to please support this motion. I think it is important that we may stand.
Councillor Bell.
Thank you. I wanted to speak in support of both of the motions on the table. And this is, I think this is a contrast there. So this comment really isn't aimed to persuade you because I think you already know what you're going to do or not to do. But this comment is for my children and for all the young people who are in the chamber today because they're watching this and they're watching me. And my children are looking to me to know how to react and how to navigate this kind of distress and fear and how to live our values at the same time. So to my ladies, every day we watch footage from Gaza and we hear this. I know that you are hugely aware of what's going on and why. And at the ages of eleven and nine, you already know that international law is a made-up concept and that human rights is a made-up concept. And like all made-up concepts, they exist only on paper unless they are enacted and upheld and they require massifying to exist in the real world. International law exists because the world has already lived through war without restraint and the horror that comes with that. The UN Charter, the Geneva Conventions, the International Court of Rights are all guardrails that prevent chaos and destruction. And I grew up in a world where those things meant something. And you're growing up in a world where they don't. And if some are in the nation that you disregard these rules, can breach them when it's superior gender without consequence and bring such terror, then international law is exposed as a toothless concept and human rights is an abstract concept for which the necessary global law has expired. And I'm sorry that you're living in that world. International law is our best hope for a secure world. And I have no hesitation at all in taking any action symbolic or otherwise that defends it. And looking past all the rhetoric to the material fact that it's plain that there is no true state solution on the table. The annexation plans, the withholding of aid, the displacement, the famine, the re-bringing of the territory, completely uninhabitable, the murder of journalists and civilians, are not the actions of a regime contemplating a ceasefire or the prioritizing of the return of hostages. My beautiful daughter, you used to ask me often how we get aid into Gaza. You fundraised, you donated, you came up with plans to get past cold cases. And some of them online stopped asking because you realized that we are powerless. And then we're watching at the moment elderly peaceful protesters being arrested on mass in England. And you realize that we might be voiceless as well. That freedom of speech is just a concept that's fast disappearing. I'm under absolutely no illusions that we here can do anything about this, but there's no reason not to try. There's no reason not to signal that we believe in human rights and power to everyone and that we support international law and the only way to make it real and not an abstract concept by upholding it in action as well as word and doing what little we can to contribute to lasting peace. Because the alternative is every country and every man for himself. And we know what that looks like because history is for that. We can use the strongest signal in the neoliberal order, our dollar, because money talks. Every dollar we spend is a vote for the kind of world that we accept and the kind of behavior that we condone. My kids are looking at me to see what we do in the face of brutal dismantling of all the assumptions that we've had about peace, security, global cooperation and human rights. And they will remember and history will remember what we chose, how we acted, who treated carefully and who sat down.
How's it happening?
Thank you. I've seen a question from the chief speaker for number three. And we don't have a problem with that.
We don't have number three, but.
No, we're a comment. I just want to.
Oh, I can't fair enough.
Through Mr. Mayor. Yeah, number three, you don't necessarily see any problems with it. What I would probably suggest is that we would bring the procurement policy back to the earliest meeting we could. Obviously, we have our strategic procurement principles in place as well. It's important to make sure that it gets approved, that it doesn't become just a one-liner in the procurement policy, that it sits appropriately where you want it to sit. So we would bring that back.
I'm also very happy to support both the motions. I do very similar to councillor Bowen. I hate to put it off when my grandchildren are watching anything to do with Gaza because they don't understand all what's going on. So for me, I would speak in support of both the motions. So thank you very much for your.
Councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, colleagues. And firstly, thank you to the petitioners. Thank you to those in the chamber today. Thank you, Katrina, busy, Vivian and Azam for your passionate, heartfelt and well-reasoned arguments. What you are doing is grappling locally with what is indeed the most confronting acts of state-sponsored violence that this world has seen in recent years. I just heard a couple of my colleagues comment about how confronting that is in a personal sense. And just want to comment briefly in terms of then what is an appropriate response for a multicultural city, a city that has a proud history, that welcoming all. And for me, at the heart of multiculturalism is a commitment to peace. It's a commitment to making sure that when we have our differences, we work those out in the absence of violence. And I think it's incumbent on us as a city to ensure that we have a depth in our response and activating multiculturalism that speaks to not only the ability to enjoy festivals, to enjoy culture, to enjoy cuisine, but to back people when they're facing the hard challenges that we see in this case. So absolutely in favor of recommendation two. And that it puts our voice collectively, 90,000 of us, in writing to the Prime Minister and the Foreign Affairs Minister. And yes, it is true that there's been some useful comments from the current government in the past recognizing the issue. The reality is that in New Zealand, there is very little, if any, sign of action. And so it is incumbent upon us as a city to call for that action. And I think doing that through the mayor's advocacy too, the Prime Minister and the Foreign Affairs Minister in the first instance, is a very proper response. Look forward to further conversations on recommendation three. Thank you, Mary.
Vivian.
Tena kwe, tina nasi dan, kote tina koto. Well, this is really, it's not hard. In my view, we're saying, kare he kore, or tu ma, tu atu. There's nothing more that can be said. When the petitioners came, you laid the ko pata down very cleanly. When my colleagues had stood, they too, they said everything that I support. And so that notion of saying kore he kore, or tu ma, tu atu is very apt in saying, what more could I say other than to say I support two of them?
Councillor McGurk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to support speaking favorably of two. But I won't support three, but I'll probably come to that everyone when it comes through. This is a topic that's very sensitive and has affected a lot of members in our community. It's Jewish and Palestinians alike. I've got Jewish friends and Palestinian friends. And I've spent the last 15 years studying all this topic. Even wrote my thesis, Hamas's thesis on this topic. I do acknowledge that this is a complex conflict that is rooted in religion, land and identity. But I believe that we must continue to call for permanent ceasefire and also call for the end to be abrogated as well as a safe return of Israeli hostages, dead or alive. It is my view that it is the responsibility of Israel and Hamas to agree to terms which enable an immediate ceasefire or cessation of armed conflict, the release of hostages and also focus on meeting immediate humanitarian need needs of the Palestinian people. As councillor, I believe we must also continue to advocate a long-term and political solution to the situation so that the Israelis and Palestinians can securely, peacefully, side by side. And it is my hope that Mr. Mayor, when he writes that letter to the Prime Minister, that will advocate for a solution that has been backed by a number of UN resolutions, UN Resolution 242, Resolution 181. And also it's a work of also a accord which calls for a Palestinian state and Israeli state living side by side peacefully. It is clear to me also that the future of Palestinian state living peacefully side by side is the only durable and realistic and fair solution. And I believe that present with all the language that we need in the West Bank or Gaza, the two-step solution is becoming a lot more difficult to imagine. But I believe that this is a solution that can only be solved at the negotiating table. Everyone in the international community should be working towards that end. I therefore call on all parties to return to the negotiating table and to take meaningful steps towards a two-step solution. Such a solution can only be achieved around the negotiating table. Yes, it's true, we can exert pressure on Israel. We can exert a lot of pressure on Israel to come to the negotiating table through these sort of actions. But I certainly believe that we should limit ourselves to option two for the time being. Palestine is a very multicultural city, as has been highlighted in the petition. As I mentioned earlier on, I've also got Jewish friends and Palestinian friends that have been affected by this conflict. There are Jewish people who do not agree with Israeli government's position. And there are Palestinians also not agree with Hamas's choice of political resistance. And therefore, I think we should limit ourselves on calling all parties to the table and for ceasefire. I'll leave it at that, but if I get an opportunity to speak on action two, I'll come back and speak to it. Thank you.
All right. I don't think I need a right of reply. Number two, we will vote on number two now, please. There's passed 16 votes for the numbers. Thank you. All right. Councillor Bowen, do you want to speak to your motion?
I will.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this forward. And as I said in integrating that it was coming, this is a result of the petition that's come from our community who asked us specifically to consider this. And so in speaking to it, I don't think I can do any better than to quote what our community has said that this is an ethical, not a political call, as councillor Bell has said. In fact, this is a conscience matter. Of course, councils have in the past taken ethical positions on international issues. And as based authority in this chamber, we certainly have that in the past. This simply asks us to avoid contract with companies complicit in grave breaches of international law. So to reverse that, would we really want to be a council that sought out contracts with companies complicit in grave breaches of international law? I don't think that's who we are, not as this council. And our community has said very clearly that they don't think that's an appropriate use of rate paid money. And that's our responsibility to hear them, to test that in this room and to come to a decision. So colleagues, I'm asking for your support to do the right thing today and stand on the right side of history in this matter.
And before I go to the deputy mayor, I just have a question to the ceiling. And I'm just unsure if maybe you'll answer this. As we all read here with the corporate general policies, what happens with strong organizations that get caught up in this? And I'm talking about big multinationals, for instance Boeing, QIPAC, those sorts of companies. Where do we go with that? If we agree to this now, do we close those organizations in our city and our region?
Through worship, I think that this particular recommendation is talking about council procurement with companies or contracts with companies complicit in these breaches. So it isn't the ones that you're potentially talking about, ones that we've got contracts directly with in any way that we're off, that we're not considering in the right direction.
Okay. I say that because we did have a former policy up and it was tested with his own defense force and it saw the rising of, intended to close the window gap. And that's where it was going. And just as a consequence, I'm not sure if we can answer that about consent through.
Yes, through worship. Again, if this resolution gets up as it is, as already previously mentioned, we would come bring it back and then show how it fits into the procurement policy. Perhaps at that point in time, this world will not to identify any sort of unforeseen consequences of this going through. But I can't think of any other top of mind.
All right. To the deputy mayor.
Thank you, worship. Greatly you asked that question because no doubt others would want to know that too. Thank you, councillor Bowen and also councillor Savelin for bringing this forward. I think one of the things that it does do is align our community's values with what we do. So it's putting upfront, this is what we value. It's aligning the decisions we make with our values. And secondly, I think it makes things very transparent in terms of where we as a council stand with this particular matter. And I think it's important, transparency is important. And I support this very much, more than the Tina Kote. And I thank everyone who's stood up.
Councillor Wood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question that's right to our council offices. I'm sure we must give something huge to that opportunity. I still need understanding, are we currently preparing for a revision in any companies that have this situation?
Through, no, not that. Are we curating or revising any companies that are involved in the Russian-Ukrainian conflict that we're aware of? Any companies or organizations that are involved in human conflict, we're aware of. Set it up. Okay. So if we not, what in our current policy repeats us currently for revising, curating companies, organizations involved in media, global policy?
Through Mr. Mayor, probably the thing that I would point to would be we, in our procurement policy, refer to the part of support of the funeral guidelines and principles, which one that springs to mind for me is the principle of integrity, which is defined as anyone who's managing private resources should do so in a good way, continually standard supply and private service and other private employees clear and private industries need to be cleared. Nothing other organizations like speaking to someone stands for me. So if we want that springs to mind at this point.
Thank you. So by opting this, it wouldn't materially challenge our funeral revision policy if they can't succeed?
Not like I foresee.
Right. Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll just briefly say, I don't know if it's councillor Bowen, she supports the abuse that's the last part of the character of someone who's writing three.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, colleagues. Surprised you to be in support of this. It's interesting hearing your line of questions that we just had around whether or not, you know, we have any dealings with any of these companies. Let's say, to some extent, that might be more down to luck than this specificity in policy. And I think it's actually worth articulating clearly in black and white from a policy point of view, whether or not we want to see public money from our community used in contracts with companies complicit in grave breaches of international law. I think that is the most simple no brainer, full stop no that you can ever imagine. We, in 2017 or 18, Mr. Mayor, we did take up a policy around investment policy, saying that we as a council would not invest in casinos and tobacco. And within that, we also said that we would not be investing in cluster munitions or landlines, because there was strong international condemnation and evidence around those. I think at that point in history, we were not seeing the levels of conflict and the levels of danger that we now see today. And I think in hindsight, if we had seen today, we would have just plugged it in then, because it only makes sense. But unfortunately, what we have seen, and as documented in this petition and every night on the news, is thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of children's lives lost, of innocent non combatant civilians caught up and killed, et cetera, et cetera. It only makes sense for us to be very clear in black and white that this community is fully committed to ensuring that our use of public money is not complicit in ensuring that the next bomb drops.
Counselor Johnson.
Thank you. I will be supporting this recommendation. And I just wanted to say that ethical investment is a concept that has been around for some time. In terms of where people want to put their money, they want to be sure that they're not inadvertently supporting atrocities. And that happens, I think many Kiwi savers, perhaps you, maybe you're not careful about where they're putting their money. Many people, when they're considering their investments, consider how they can do that ethically. I think it's very hard for people to think that they have to pay their rates to the council, and the council is subsequently using their rates to support companies that are in breach of international law. And I think that rate pays have got every right to ask us not to do that. The second thing is, I'm giving down back practicalities whether we do or we don't have investments in them at the moment, how much it's, you know, whether it hurts us or it doesn't hurt us. That's by and by. In fact, the fact, that shouldn't, in my mind, that shouldn't be a factor in whether we do this, whether we have our investments, whether it's going to make a difference. The point is that we're taking a stand, an ethical stand, and saying, this is something that we don't think should be happening. If it doesn't hurt us at all, that, you know, that, in a way, isn't very formidable to say. It would be more formidable if it was certain. But nevertheless, I think it's an important stand to make. And then finally, I want to say that I'm not really having much sympathy for those who are trying to split hairs and saying, oh, we can't do this already, so we don't need to support this. Supporting vision of communities, I still. I want to give a time of honor to people with petitions of this nature. Very, very rarely. It's important to people, we're here to represent people and their views, and I think we should support it.
Counselor Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and colleagues. So totally supported this recommendation, number three, by Counselor Bowen. If we go back to an previous presenter in the Caddis papers, that Christchurch City Council became the first level of government in 2024, not to support any businesses that sanction the war efforts in Gaza. At the time, the Christchurch City Council, like Hamas City Council today, does not spend any money on those companies listed in the United Nations. So it was definitely a gesture of good faith and humanity. Regardless of whether we are spending any money on those companies, it's irrelevant, because the key to what Christchurch City Council did was made it impossible that any dealings with any of those companies listed could be done for business in the future. So I'd be supportive of this recommendation.
Counselor McLeod.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Just one last question before I vote stop. If we were to ask for proceed on the kind of reports from the chair on probably unforeseen consequences of not of this regulation, how would that, is it sort of a test analysis we can do? Because I'm just very mindful of the practicalities around this, and potentially unforeseen consequences that it's might have for us, that say, if we're dealing with Lincoln Camp, for example, or IKEA Camp, or a particular thing, or consultation, and then that sort of affects our dealings in that regard.
Through the chair, you haven't explicitly asked for that, but I think I've mentioned a couple of times now that the intention with this is that we would see how this fits within the framework of the current procurement policy and bring that back into the chamber. I think it's important. Otherwise, this recommendation will just simply sit as a one liner probably in the procurement policy of a case as it is. And I don't think that that's your intention around that, if you wanted us to. We will probably look at, given the fact that there's been a number of questions asked about procurement currently at the moment, we may very well just do a scan across our systems to see where procurement is occurring and ensuring that it's in line with the council's decision around that. That will probably lead into a conversation when the policy comes back into the chamber around any sort of unforeseen consequences.
I'll speak in opposition to the condition three, and for the very reasons that I highlighted during your remarks. While I understand the plight of the Palestinian people and our shares, the concerns that they brought forward to us by the community, I don't feel comfortable with this particular recommendation because of some of these unforeseen consequences that I'm not willing to put my name to at the moment. As I was saying, and you can say, it's clear to me that a future Palestinian state living side by side with Israel is the only option and realistic and fair solution. And that the best way to achieve this conflict is through negotiation. We may take a stand as a council, which we already done in option two, which is to go for ceasefire and encourage both parties to come to the table. But I'm not prepared to support a recommendation for you. But through my actions, I've highlighted that I'm in favor of pushing for ceasefire, and for the mayor to write a letter to the Prime Minister expressing that concern and the concerns of the community that have been shared with us this morning. But I'm not prepared to put my name on the options, because I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Colleagues, look, thank you, Counselor Dan, for putting this forward. It is what this community here now is asking for. Just want to signal the unforeseen consequences that possibly could happen. There is a list of companies, and some of them are here, and some of them are coming here. So it does put some of our big logistics and some of our other existing sectors at risk. So Volvo, Caterpillar, Microsoft, Amazon, AWS, Web Services, Star, all companies that you are signing away, shipping lines. So I do have some real issues with that. It's the, I don't have any. The resolution as of this sounds absolutely ethical in everything that we should be doing. But do we sign away to take many logistics up? Do we sign away other parts of our logistics and defense sectors? That is what you have to ask yourself. So I haven't got an opinion yet. I'm going to maybe explain why people are on the moon, but I just want you to think about that. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to speak very, very briefly. The motion that's being put up there really gives us an opportunity to review our policy and light off the catastrophic breaches of human rights that are occurring and have unfolded in Gaza. It'll give us a chance to actually examine the fine print of our procurement policy and bring those back to the chamber to provide some surety for council in terms of the way we go about the business and cookie fun. As I mentioned before, the catastrophic breaches of human rights and war crimes in Gaza cannot be ignored, and we cannot be complicit with that terrible, terrible state that is actually occurring.
Counselor. So is now the council wishing to speak? I'll go ahead to you, Counselor Bowen, for a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, colleagues, for your thoughtful consideration of this request from the community. Thank you to officers for trying to help us work through any unintended consequences that might be within that. And I was very encouraged, and I'm sure the community was, to hear from our CFO about the integrity standards that our officers hold themselves to in determining how they affect our policies. I think what this is asking us to do is to hold ourselves as elected members to that same standard of integrity and to respond to the community who has asked us to do that. It's mildly ironic, I suppose, that we're talking about unforeseen, so unforeseen consequences of a policy, whereas when you turn the TV, we're seeing the absolutely unforeseen consequences of these breaches of international law in our wider community. And we've spoken today about that may be confronting and wanting to turn the TV off so we don't have to see it. Our community don't have that luxury when that's their family, their father, their friends, their community, who are facing that day by day in their lived experience. Easy for me to turn the TV off and go do something else. Not so easy for them. And so they've come into this chamber to make a very reasonable request of us, as they are elected members, that we take this seriously and that we reflect on the things that we can do. And I'm as delighted as the rest of you to hear that probably we're already doing all of this. Probably this makes no difference. There may be some situations that we have to consider, and the mayor is absolutely right to raise those, and the chief executive is committed to bringing that back to us to look at. But today, in the face of our community's request, I think we can do this, and I think we should do it.
All right, we will vote yes. That's a nice feeling for us. All right. We apologize to the community of all the people. We might just get a small break. Thank you. So we'll be back in the chamber in a quarter to two.